...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Statement of active notice. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, active notice this meeting has been provided as follows. On April 28, 2016, noted to the Home New Tribune, Star Ledger, Global Source, and the clerk of the municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items on this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein as is allowed at the regularly scheduled monthly meeting under Sunshine Law.
Roll call.
Ms. Slater?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Taples?
Yes.
Mrs. Belloni?
Present.
Mr. Alvarez?
Here.
Mrs. Fabiana?
Present.
Mrs. Birch?
Here.
Mrs. Huda?
Here.
Approval of minutes?
Do you have a motion for the approval of your voting minutes?
No, I'll do it next.
You made a motion.
You made a motion. I do a second.
Ms. Slater?
She can.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Belloni?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Fabiana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Huda?
Yes.
Madam President, I'd like to call to the Honorable if I can on this for just a moment. There's a board, as we all know, there's a board vacancy, and there's the boards where you should fill that vacancy and do it expeditionally possible. So, if it would please the board, a motion to fill the board vacancy, effective immediately and to appoint Anthony Walrath as the replacement board member. There's a motion for that.
Second. Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Belloni?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Fabiana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Huda?
Yes.
At this time, obviously, again, please the board and Mr. Walrath would like to come and get sworn in and continue to see what they've got.
I grabbed, I'll do one. I grabbed three.
Mr. Walrath, you're going to repeat after me, this is the swearing in your board seat. I state your name.
I, Anthony Walrath.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God. I state your name.
I, Anthony Walrath.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law for the office of a member of the Board of Education.
Prescribed by the law for the office of a member of the Board of Education.
And you are not disqualified as a voter.
And I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
You are not disqualified due to conviction of a crime.
And I am not disqualified due to conviction of a crime.
Or offense listed.
Or offense listed.
In NJSA 18A:12-1.
In NJSA 18A:12-1.
And then you will faithfully.
And then I will faithfully.
And partially and justly.
And partially and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office.
Perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of your abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Madam President. This time, I'd like to give my report, and I can tell by the amount of people in the audience that you've all come to hear my scintillating superintendent's report tonight, and that's why you're all here. So, I'm happy to give it to you. That was a joke. Let's get with the program. Madam President, first, I'd like to give our, first, I'd like to congratulate our newest board member, Anthony Walrath. Anthony Walrath happened to be a senior at Linden High School when I was the high school principal, and happened to be my class president. And if he is as persistent as he was as the class president in his senior year at Linden High School, persistent is the nicest way to say it. If he is as persistent as he was as a student at Linden High School on the board, then I'm confident that this board will accomplish a lot with him on the team. Congratulations, Anthony. I'm happy to have you, and that we should rest a little. Now, I'd like to give the monthly HIV report. This month, we had 28 incidents reported. Ten of those were validated as being HIV incidents. Twelve were not, and six were undetermined. The consequences included out-of-school suspension, detention, schedule changes, and monitoring, and in all instances, the victims were counseled. I want also to congratulate the 410 Linden High School seniors who graduated last Friday. It was really a wonderful ceremony. The weather was absolutely perfect. You couldn't have asked for a better day. I'm going to give some statistics to the public on our graduating class. Of the 410 seniors, 82% of them plan to continue their education in either two- or four-year colleges or universities. 40% of those plan on pursuing careers in the military. I think that deserves an award. And 6% plans to enter another form of post-secondary training. It could be a trade school, it could be a business school. 8% plan to go directly to work and join the workforce. Our seniors have been accepted by more than 50 colleges and universities across the country. To name a few, Princeton University, Rutgers, NYU, Drew, Johnson &amp; Webb, Seton Hall University, NJIT, and my alma mater, the College of New Jersey. I am extremely proud of our seniors, and I wish them all the best in the future. We have a couple of awards that I'd like to give out tonight. We have some special recognition. Then we have a brief presentation. We have some students here with a faculty member who'll do a brief presentation. So, at this time, I'd like to ask Mrs. Huda to join me at the podium. This first award is extremely special because it doesn't happen very often. Linden High School teacher, Monica Gonzalez, where are you, Monica? Monica has been named the Union County Teacher of the Year. Just to explain how this process works, every school in Union County, Linden has 11 schools, we have 11 Teachers of the Year, one from each school. Every school district in Union County has a Teacher of the Year from each school. Monica was selected out of all of the schools in Union County, out of all of those phenomenal teachers, to represent Union County as the Teacher of the Year. It's a tremendous honor, and I just want to read a little bit about Monica. She is a passionate and enthusiastic teacher who has taught a number of different classes at Linden High School and overseen many special school projects inclusive during her 14-year tenure at Linden High School. She began teaching all the core social studies courses, U.S. history, world history. She then took over Introduction to Education, a course that was very close to my heart because I used to teach it. She helped instill a love of teaching and a desire to become a teacher in many, many students. She recently developed a curriculum for a new criminal justice class. She also currently serves her colleagues as the chairwoman of the Social Studies Department. Outside of the classroom, Monica has served in the Linden High School community as the coordinator of the Bias and Prejudice Reduction Program, National Honor Society advisor, Law Day and Mock Election Coordinator. She's a member of the Graduation Committee, Middle States Committee, and a member of the Special Coordination of Professional Enrichment Team, the Scope Team. Her tireless work has made her a leader in Linden High School, and I couldn't be any prouder to have her represent our district at the county level. Now, here's hoping that she wins the State Teacher of the Year.
Sure. Linden High School Teacher of the Year, Union County Teacher of the Year, 2015-2016, presented to Monica Goncalves in recognition for your caring work, commitment, and dedication to our students.
Congratulations.
Make sure you tell everybody you mentored you. Just saying, I don't know if I had anything to do with it, but I'm going to take some credit.
Ms. Slater, would you join me at the podium, please?
We have another special award tonight, a real special award. We have a teacher among us, Mr. Kevin LaMastra is standing in the back, he'll come up in a second. Kevin was named among thousands of people as a national emerging leader in education by the ASCD, the Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development. Kevin has been an ESL and World Languages teacher in our district for the past 21 years. He was twice named Union County Teacher of the Year. He finished that one year as runner-up in the entire state of New Jersey for the State Teacher of the Year, and he should have won. Kevin is the founder of Friends Beyond Borders, an international professional development program for educators focusing on global education, human rights, and equity issues. This summer, Kevin will facilitate a week-long teachers retreat where educators from across the nation will gather to share research-based practices used to close the opportunity gaps that result in unequal opportunities to learn in school and beyond school. So, Kevin takes a group of educators each summer to Haiti and Dominican Republic and shows them what real poverty looks like. Everyone who I've ever spoken to who has been on this trip has said it has changed their lives. Educators who are selected as national emerging leaders have to have been in the education profession for at least five to 15 years, demonstrate a passion for learning, teaching, and leading, come from a diverse range of positions, locations, cultural backgrounds, and perspectives. They hold promise as leaders and are committed to the association's beliefs and to pursuing leadership opportunities. There were only seven teachers in New Jersey chosen for this award this year. It's a tremendous achievement, Kevin. On behalf of the entire board and the Linden Public Schools, we are very proud of you. Ms. Belloni, would you please present yourself?
Linden Public Schools and the Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development acknowledge Kevin LaMastra, Class of 2016, National Emerging Leader in Education, in recognition for your passion for learning, teaching, and leadership toward our students, June 28, 2016.
I want to recognize some special people in the audience tonight. No, it's not the Walrath family. It's the Robertos. They're our core, man. And plus, we have two extra tonight. We have cousins visiting all the way from Scotland. Emma and Maya are here from Scotland. Say hi, Emma. Their parents who are visiting from Scotland standing in the back. For a little while, the kids are going to be taken hostage by my secretary, and then the adults are going out for dinner after. So, I love you guys, I'm glad to see you here tonight. At this time, our Donna and Scott Marino here. Scott, Donna, would you mind coming up and showing off some of your apparel?
Sure.
Ladies and gentlemen, the board members of the public, tonight, the board will be voting on a contract with Panda Apparel to sell merchandise with our licensed trademark logo, which, as the board knows, and as the public may know, our logo was developed as a student project last year in the Alton Contest. So, we're very, very proud of it. And tonight, Donna and Scott are here to show us some of the items that they will be selling through their company. Donna, Scott, welcome.
Hello, thank you so much for having us.
You want to just show them a couple of things?
Okay, so first, we took the beautiful logo that your student designed, and we threw out a sample of a polo. This is some sample polos we'll be doing. And products include shopolos.
Basic t-shirts, hoodies, what else do we have on there? We have some fleece jackets.
Polo shirts, sweatpants, hats.
Right.
Scarves.
A comprehensive collection.
Sweaters, jackets.
And spirit wear, right.
We'll also be able to purchase duffel bags, and lanyards, and keychains, and pins, and umbrellas. It's very exciting. And magnets, and flags, and stickers, and plastic hand clippers. Foam, foam pans for a finger without a lock. I'm going to steal your thunder, but. Would you just please briefly explain your proposal to the board as to what they're voting on, just the basic terms of it?
Basically, we planned on doing a setting up, we worked very diligently with Dan there, to figure out how to set up an online store for the Linden, what is it called, Linden Logo Gear. We'll start with some basic items, you know, that are very easy to produce, it should be the popular items that most people want. From the polo shirts to t-shirts, sweatshirts, and sweatpants, some hats. So, we'll do set up an online store, complete secure online ordering, and we'll produce the merchandise as people order it, and we'll ship that merchandise to them. We've worked out an arrangement with Dan, we'll rebank or refund or pay back to the district a 20% commission on all the sales of all merchandise, so that covers, you know, it's a revenue-sharing model, so, you know, the district's expenditures are, it should be almost zero other than some basic time to, you know, approve and review the different items that you produce them. And then, depending on the success of it, we will maybe the district put a link on their website, you know, to have some email contacts for, whether it's the educators, the administrators, the other staff, or students as the board or Dan assumes fit. They can promote this, you know, as a revenue-sharing model, it's a win for, the more stuff sells, the better the district does, the better the board does, so the board has invested interest in helping to promote the website. If they opt not to, there won't be many sales, and.
My goal, as the board knows, is to have an online store, to have a link on our website for anybody, not just our staff and students, but anybody who wants Linden gear can go online and purchase it. It will be made by Panda Apparel, it will be shipped within two to three business days. Just because Mr. D E S, I think it's important, I just go for some of the prices, and I think you all agree that these prices are very reasonable. A t-shirt with the logo. Cotton from $10 to $12 depending on the size. Short-sleeved dry-fit shirt, $15 to $17. Sweatshirts, $20 to $22. Polo shirts, $20 to $25 depending on the size. Sweatpants, $18 to $20. Hats, $15 to $20. Jackets between $25 to $50. Blankets, $20. So, I think, I think those prices are very reasonable, and we're getting, the board is getting a 20% revenue from that. So, I think it's a win-win, and I'm going to ask the board to vote yes on this proposal tonight.
Is this going to be limited to the Linden district logo itself, or will the other clubs be up to others?
Right now, we want to start off slow to make sure it works with the Linden logo and the L with a tiger claw, which we have also patented and trademarked. What I can foresee in the future, we're going to have a site-based store somewhere, either in school, in storefronts, where Panda may be a supplier for that store, and may take on the clubs, may take on the sports, and do all that. So, right now, no, but possibly in the future. And Panda Apparel does business with several other school districts and neighboring. Thank you, Scott, thank you, Donna. And last, but certainly not least, we have a brief presentation tonight, a program that I'm very, very proud of. Anybody who knows me knows that I'd much rather be with the kids than with the adults. So, over the last year, with the help of Ms. Crowley and our HR manager, Ms. Dory, we developed the Superintendent Student Ambassador Program. And it was a way for me to keep in touch with our students, to hear about the issues going on at Linden High School, to hear about the good things, the negative things, and to try to make positive changes. So, we had our last meeting a couple weeks ago, and they did a presentation. I was overwhelmed with the students and some of the things that they had to say about the program, and I really, Mrs. Huda was there, we were both very moved, and we wanted the board to hear about what this group of phenomenal students did. So, at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Crowley to come up and do a brief presentation. She'll introduce our students.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to say thank you for giving us an opportunity to talk about this special program with all of you. As Dr. Robertozzi mentioned, this year, our district had a new initiative to become a district of distinction and to rise to the challenge. And so, what better way to achieve this than to include our students? So, we started a very special program entitled the Student Ambassadors. The Student Ambassadors are a diverse group of Linden High School students from various different aspects of Linden High School. Some of them are IB, some of them are athletes, some of them are students within IEP, some of them are ESL students. They all gather together and talk about some of the concerns of Linden High School. They're the voice of their classmates. They work collaboratively with Mrs. Corey, myself, and other board cabinet members to create an effective learning environment for our students. In addition to that, our ambassadors are also the welcoming students for any new students who come in and enroll to Linden High School. They give them a tour of the building and just get them acquainted with what Linden High School has to offer. Some of the accomplishments this year for the ambassadors, they spoke up about how students needed to know more information about different clubs and activities that Linden High School has to offer. So, they suggested that we do a club fair, where all the different clubs had tables that were set up, and they talked about what they have to offer, and they got more students involved in these different clubs and activities, and different extracurricular activities in the school. They also played a part in the School Spirit Week. One of our ambassadors also started Relay for Life. It was the very first Relay for Life that Linden has ever offered. In addition to giving tours, some of the students felt as though their accomplishments were personal, helping them to not be so shy and be more open-minded, working with other students. In addition to that, one of our ambassadors also started a new sports team. We now have a boys' volleyball team, the first ever in Linden that was started by one of our very own students. So, these students really know how to speak up and create positive changes. Some of the projects for next year the ambassadors would like to do is more fundraising, so they can do additional projects for the school. They also want to collaborate with other schools within the district, especially the elementary and the middle school students of the district. In addition to starting a new store, they also want to be more involved with the community. So, I have some ambassadors here who are going to reflect on some of the positive experiences that they've had working with Dr. Robertozzi and the other administrators of the district. So, at this time, I would like to invite Larnie Jimenez. Tell us a little bit about their experience as ambassadors.
Good afternoon. Hi, I'm Larnie. And to me, the ambassadors group was like, was like a family, new friends, a place where like I can be safe and to tell all my ideas and speak up for what I thought was, what was good to do for the school and for all the students. I was really shy and quiet before I went to the ambassadors, and being a part of that program, helping better the school, and make new things for people to become more sociable and like strive in their education, it's like a really, it's a like a really big honor. And I personally thought that it was a place that I didn't, like I can be comfortable in and share what, like what I wanted to make better of the school, and it was like great working. There was no negative parts of it. It's, everything was just positive and amazing, and I'm so honored to be a part of it.
Good afternoon, my name is Marissa Hattie-Aydi. I'm 18 years old. I have been a DUS for nearly four years. I'm a ESL student. My English is not very good, but you guys will understand. Being a student ambassador helped me a lot, and helped me grow, knowing more about myself and knowing more about other students. And a few things I like about being a student ambassador is helping students around the school, and hearing them tell me that they're going to miss me for good, trust me. And my other part of being a student ambassador is coming in here and talking to so happy to see is Mrs. Corey, and Ms. Crowley, and all the other students, and seeing them like feel like they have to give them their idea for the school, and I feel better of how the school. And my other part of being a student ambassador is.
Breakfast.
Every time he comes here, he always gives food.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Brendan Burden, and I was a student ambassador as well with these two lovely ladies. One thing I'm happy about in being ambassador is I got to be a leader of the school, and more importantly, I got to show other kids what Linden High School and Linden, the district, is all about. So, one of my biggest. So one of my biggest accomplishments was, I remember sitting at home and Dr. Robotosi calling my mother, asking if I can give a tour to a student who wasn't too sure about coming to Lindon High. He was thinking of going to Union Catholic or Roseau Catholic, and his mother really wanted him to go to Lindon High. So I go in school Friday morning. I knew this kid wants to be in ROTC if he came, so I came in my ROTC uniform. One thing, he walks in and he's of course shy and very scared of being in a big building with a lot of kids. So we started walking around. I started showing him like where classrooms were, where the media center were, where the office was, and I started cracking some jokes about him like, oh, don't mind the kids. They're not going to shove you in a locker and stuff like that. Don't listen to what your middle school friends are telling you that their siblings do, will do to them. So I got a really close connection with this kid. And I remember sitting home that night and getting a phone call from him saying, I just made the decision, I'm going to be coming to Lindon High School, and I will be seeing you next year. That was my biggest accomplishment as a ambassador. I got to show somebody that wasn't too sure about Lindon High what Lindon High School is really about and how it can help you, not just in your high school years, but later on in life. So I'm really happy about being that. And of course, I did love the food and talking to Dr. Robotosi. And also, of course, I loved making changes in the school. So one thing that we're planning on doing now is a school store. The alternative office on the first floor, we're hoping to turn that into a school store. So hopefully, kids will be able to go there and buy more apparel and buy stuff that, like maybe a notebook that they don't have for class, or pens and pencils, or USBs, because now we're an electronic school with every kid in the district now has a laptop. So now we can support them with USBs and stuff that they need on a daily basis. So thank you.
Okay, now there's another big project that the ambassadors, that the ambassadors are going to be working on, and that is our freshman survival guide. A lot of times, ninth graders have difficulty transitioning from middle school to high school. So our goal is to help the transition for them a little smoother. A lot of times, when students become upperclassmen, they regret not taking their grades seriously or not being involved in extracurricular activities like they would have liked to. So our goal is to help students be better prepared for the high school experience so they don't have these regrets later. So the freshman survival guide will feature graduation requirements, information about the counselors and social workers available for them, all of the different clubs and activities that Lindon High School has to offer, as well as all of the different sports. We also focus on various populations of students in Lindon High School. We give advice for ESL students to speak as much English as possible to help them learn the language. For students with an IEP to know what their modifications are and be able to advocate for themselves so that they get all that they need in their classes. We also give information for the VOTEC students, what classes they need to take to make sure they're prepared for VOTEC. And our IB program, we want students to be able to know what the IB program is, what it all has to offer, and to make sure they understand how, how they're going to be able to get into that program once they're juniors and seniors. So that means they really need to be able to take their grades seriously during freshman and sophomore year. In addition to that, we offer advice on time management, organizational skills, and what to do when there's trouble in a class. And we also want to help students prepare for the future. So we provide an action plan for the students so they know what they should be doing to prepare for college freshman year, sophomore year, junior year, and senior year. We also want to help students create resumes early on in their high school year so they can keep track of all the extracurricular activities they're a part of, any volunteer experience they've done, and any part-time or summer work that they've, they've done so that they can keep track of it. And once they're seniors, they'll have enough information to have really great college essays and really great letters of recommendation. And last but not least, we wanted to end the freshman manual with some encouraging words for our students. So there's a little poem I wrote entitled, "You Are a Tiger." You are a tiger, fierce, mighty, and strong. When you set your mind to something, you could never go wrong. Your orange and black isn't a mesmerizing sight to see. Your character, intellect, and talent uplifts the community. Your roar is ferocious and demands to be heard. You know how to speak your mind, exude confidence in every word. You are a tiger, and don't you ever forget. The sky is the limit, your future is set. Thank you very much.
You can see why I love these students and why I'm so proud. But it couldn't be done without a teacher, an advisor, a counselor like Ms. Crowley. So Ms. Crowley, thank you. Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Robotosi. Attorney?
No actions.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. For curriculum instruction, this is Viviana.
Thank you, Madam President. The Curriculum Instruction Committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the assistant superintendent, presents the following forty-six motions to the Lindon Board of Education for approval. Items one through thirteen deal with the approval of specialized programs for the placement of classified students, the determination of out-of-district placements, the approval of payments for related services as per child study team evaluations, the approval of home instruction services, the assignment of one-to-one paraprofessionals, adjustments to tuition, and the continuance of providers for neurological and psychiatric evaluations. Item fourteen approves the enrollment of students on a tuition basis from the state of New Jersey. Items fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen approve the team sport schedules for the 2016 fall schedule, the dates for the athletic awards program, and the dates for the Fall Blue Elementary Track and Field Event. Item eighteen authorizes the 2016-17 Lindon Athletic Training Plan of Care. Item nineteen amend board action on past CNI reports. Item twenty adopts curriculum. Twenty-one grant permission for use of facilities and school activities. Twenty-two approves district field trips. Twenty-three and twenty-four approve training for district staff. Twenty-five approve professional development activities. Twenty-six approve district mentors. Twenty-seven approve staff to conduct events that pertain to technology one-to-one programs. Twenty-eight approves a tuition agreement contract with Union County Vocational Technical School. Twenty-nine approve Saturday dates for the 2016-17 school year. Item thirty authorizes the submission of the 2017 NCLB consolidated grant. Item thirty-one grants approval for a K University student to conduct a survey in the Lindon Public Schools as part of her dissertation research project. Thirty-two grants approval to award three credits for a Polish language course to three Lindon High School students. Thirty-three grants approval for students from Lindon High School, Soul, and McManus to participate in the leadership training conference at the College of New Jersey. Thirty-four grants approval for the students in the Lindon High School Musical Theater Program to participate in the Paper Mill Playhouse adopted school program. Items thirty-five, forty-three, and forty-four authorize the submission of the bilingual program waiver request, the IDEA application for fiscal year 2017, and the security drill statement of insurance for 2015-16 school year. Item thirty-six recognizes and congratulates the Lindon Public School District ESL bilingual staff for being awarded the Model ESL Program. Thirty-seven recognizes and congratulates thirty-one 12th grade students for achieving the DOE Scale of Biliteracy. Thirty-eight approve summer work for two ESL teachers. Thirty-nine grant permission for the Lindon Public Schools to enter into an agreement with New Jersey, New Jersey City University, allowing students to obtain college credits for business courses. Item forty approves revisions to the needs assessment of the 2016-17 Comprehensive Equity Plan. Forty-one grant approval to enter into an agreement with Union County Ed Services Commission to provide Title I services to Lindon's non-public schools. Forty-two approves the readoption of Title I parent documents. Forty-five approves the SAT Action Plan for the Lindon Public School District. And forty-six approves the superintendent's determination and actions taken for all reported incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying discussed at the May 24, 2016 regular meeting.
Viviana, excuse me. Forty-seven, there was a forty-seven added. There was the motion on the OFAT case we discussed the other night.
My apologies.
It was probably within your own position.
And item number forty-seven approves the motion to certify the Office of Fiscal Accountability and Compliance Case, which were discussed at the Board of Education held on June 23. Mr. President, Mrs. President, I am Lord Kirk of Instruction. Item one through forty-seven, respectfully seek the second. Forty-eight.
Special roll call?
No.
Second.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Halvus?
Yes.
Mrs. Valani?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Huedak? Yes. Management Operations?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. The Management Operations Committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, presents the following thirty-one motions to the Lindon Board of Education for approval. The first one is the acceptance of the retirement. Dr. Robotosi?
Thank you, Mr. Halvus. I can recognize Francine Fegaro, who's worked in a Lindon school district for 20 years. She'll be retiring in September. She spent most of her career of a pre-kindergarten teacher, so you know she was a very, very special teacher. So I want to thank her for her devotion and dedication to our children and wish her the very best in her retirement.
Item number two is to approve the following resolutions. Item three, amend board actions of past management operations reports included. Four, appoint the following staff for the upcoming school year as follows. Five, transfer the following staff effective September 1st. Six, approve the following transfers of staff for the 2016-2017 school year effective July 1st. Seven, approve the transfer of staff for the 2016-2017 school year effective August 1st. Eight, leaves of absence. Nine, approve the following ESL teacher to work the summer ESL planning contract at a rate of 27 an hour. Ten, appoint the following to work the Title III 2016 Summer Tutorial Program. Eleven, appoint the following teachers to be part of fifth grade Social Studies Material Development Committee. Twelve, approve the following staff to work this summer to administer the Department of Education required screening to incoming pre-kindergarten and kindergarten students. Thirteen, approve summer hours for the following staff. Fourteen, approve the following staff to conduct summer technology professional development workshops. Fifteen, approve the following staff member for summer hours for summer curriculum review and PLC planning. Sixteen, appoint the following margin bed staff for the summer 2016, and appoint the following margin bed staff for the fall 2016. Seventeen, eighteen, appoint the following administrators to work Saturday school detention at Lindon High School for the upcoming school year. Nineteen, appoint the following staff to work Saturday school at Lindon High School for the upcoming school year. Twenty, appoint Henderson Michael as interim reporting custodian at Lindon High School. Appoint Kuchi Frank as acting reporting custodian at School Six. Twenty-two, appoint the following coaches for fall sports 2016. Twenty-three, appoint the following staff to work morning and afternoon security at Lindon High School for a half hour to start and end of each day. Twenty-four, approve the following staff to work security before and after school events at Lindon High School. Twenty-five, reappoint the following district security attendant substitute for the upcoming school year. Twenty-six, grant approval to create the AP History Prep Club at Lindon High School. Twenty-seven, be resolved the Lindon Board of Education has determined that one qualitative goal copies in the hands of board members established for the 2015-2016 school year for Danny A. Robotosi, chief school administrator, has been satisfied to date. And be further resolved that the business administrator, board secretary shall forward a copy of the resolutions of Union County Superintendent of Schools. And be further resolved that upon receipt of confirmation of satisfaction of the above goal of Union County Superintendent of Schools, the applicable merit bonus provision to the superintendent contract shall be paid. Twenty-eight, approve the recommendation of superintendent to place employee names on file on administrative leave with pay effective June 17. Twenty-nine, reappoint the following technology technician substitutes for the upcoming school year. Thirty, appoint students listed to part-time work for the upcoming school year to videotape board of ed meetings. Thirty-one, reappoint the following substitutes for the upcoming school year. And, Ms. President, I move items one through thirty-one and ask for a second.
A second. Special roll call.
Special questions are? I have one question, two-part question. Probably just proceed, Bill, and explain why it goes this way. Number three, amend board actions on past management operation reports. From March 23, 2016, item number seventeen, are lending the hours for the two gentlemen, except the meeting minutes stated is still Marla? So is it?
Tell me the item again. This is the only...
Number seventeen, on March 23, 2016, this is for the attendance officers, but it didn't even state it was John and Marla, not James Macaulay. James Macaulay was part of the reunion. So was that amended another time? I tried to... And I know in the...
So what you're saying is the original agenda item said Marla Fakini and James... Oh, okay. I understand why.
Is that a substantial thing?
Because we, we approved Marla Fakini to work 25 hours while she retired on. So this is to amend that item to add James Macaulay. It should, I should...
The substitution is 10 hours to 25 hours.
And this is for substitution of the...
And this is, okay.
So it's probably just not clear. It wasn't very clear.
Okay, that was another question. I'll try.
Do you have any questions? Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Halvus?
Yes.
Mrs. Valani?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch? Yes.
Mrs. Huedak? I vote yes on the one second for number nineteen. I need to stay on the... Support Operations?
Thank you, Madam President. The Support Operations Committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools and business administrator, board secretary, presents the following motions to the Lindon Board of Education for approval. Items one through eight are our standard business of the board. Item number nine, amend board action on past support operation report finance as follows. Number 10, amend April 25, 2016 Support Operations Finance Agenda. Item number 35, approving renewable notes for student transportation for the 2016-2017 school year as follows. Number 11, accept funds for the Danny A. Robotosi Superintendent Scholarship Fund as follows. Number 12, accept the funds for an ad in the Danny A. Robotosi Superintendent Scholarship Fund First Annual Fundraiser Dinner Ad Journal as follows. Number 13, accept funds in the amount of $2,600 from the Italian American Committee. Number 14, accept funds in the amount of $1,000 from ShopRite of Lindon. Number 15, accept funds from the Target Take Charge of Education Program. Number 16, accept funds in the amount of $395 from School 4K Kids, representing proceeds from Mother's Day bouquet. Item 17, accept funds in the amount of $307.71 from the Wood Cliff Academy, Peru, New York. Number 18, approve 21st Century Community Learning Center, Soul Middle School, to enter into a contract with Management and Evaluation Services, New Brunswick, New Jersey, in the amount of $12,500 for the period September 1st through August 31st, 2017. Item 19...